This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was posted in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 2221 South Fifth Avenue, on January 3rd, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. And if you -- listening devices are available, and if you come up to speed, please speak into the microphone. Karen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Per Lindler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Councilwoman Nowakowicz?
Here.
Or attorney?
Here.
Or administrator?
Here.
All right, we're going to go right into council reports. I'm going to start on my right this time. Councilwoman Nowakowicz, do you have a report this evening?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Last week, Monday, after our zoning board meeting, our borough planner, Jim Konstantin, reviewed all the tools in our toolbox that we can use to maximize opportunities for redevelopment of our downtown. Downtown redevelopment is critical to our municipality and our greatest source of revenues. Members of our planning board were also present as Mr. Konstantin reviewed the borough's designation as an area in need of rehabilitation and the role of the screening committee, which we created to meet with developers and ready a project before being assigned to an agency or board. Last Tuesday, held our monthly planning board meeting. We're creating a new committee to start thinking about the review of our master plan, which will be done in 2019, but this year, we're prepping for that. That team is going to be headed by our former mayor, Steve Nolan. Our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee has a new webpage. It's hbborough.com/swacc, which is Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. And yesterday, we had a fantastic kickoff meeting with representative from New Jersey Department of Transportation and our new consultants. They are -- NJDOT is providing these consultation services for free to us, and they will be designing a bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure for us. This was -- this is a grant program at the NJDOT sponsors, and we're very fortunate to be in the program. We met with the people there, along with our borough administrator and members of our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, and the consultants will be providing a scope of work, and we hope to roll out some things to the public starting in, I believe, May of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fine. Councilwoman Kim Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor. I'll keep it very quick. The Board of Health will hold its regular meeting on March 8th as we continue to work toward advancing our 2018 goals, including tobacco prevention, opioid awareness and prevention, and planning for our health fair, which is set for May. Please stay tuned for details. In related news, I had a meeting today in Jamesburg with the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute. I'm pleased to report that Highland Park has named us a 2018 healthy town to watch. This is the second year in a row we received this designation, and congratulations to all involved. In addition to deserved publicity and future programming, we're getting a mini grant of $500 to go toward our newly revitalized Mayor's Wellness Campaign, which is under the close watch of Dr. Cliff Lacy, who's the former Health Commissioner of New Jersey. The Highland Park Gives A Hoot will hold its regular monthly meeting Monday, March 12th at 7:00 PM in the lower level conference room here at Borough Hall. Please come. The Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, March 13th at 7:30 PM in the lower level conference room here at Borough Hall. Please come. In related news, I spoke yesterday at a march called No Dream Deferred: New Jersey's Statewide Day of Action on Broward Commons on Rutgers, New Brunswick campus on College Ave. This was part of a string of statewide actions that took place in Rutgers Newark, Rutgers Camden, Rutgers, New Brunswick, Westfield, Hamilton Township, and May's Landing. March 5th yesterday was President Trump's end date for DACA, which was delayed by the federal courts, as many of you know. As such, Dreamers and Allies took back the day. So as Congress continues to delay action, Dreamers are demanding a Dream Act that does not criminalize our communities and separate our families. It was good to see so many people so fired up and fighting back, and it was good to see so many Highland Parkers there, too, representing. The Highland Park Housing Authority will hold its regular meeting Wednesday, March 14th, 6:30 PM, next door to the Samuel Crumman Building on 242 South Sixth Avenue. Please come. The -- let me jump ahead here. On Monday, March 19th at 7:30 PM, 7:30 here at Borough Hall, the Commission for Universal Access will hold its monthly meeting. One day before that, Sunday, March 18th at 3:00 PM in the Senior Youth Center, please join us for our annual Unity Celebration, a cross-cultural celebration geared toward our community's youth. Last year's program featured children from our entire school community, both public and private. The celebration includes musical performances, spoken word performances, dance, and more. In fact, you'll recall that last year's celebration featured the premiere of the official song of "Highland Park: Stand in Unity" by Mr. Ray Anderson. On Thursday, March 29th at 7:00 PM at the Senior Youth Center, please join the Highland Park Human Relations Commission Book Club, the New Brunswick Area NAACP, and the Highland Park Parents of Students of Color to discuss Carol Anderson's "White Rage: The Unspoken Truth of Our Racial Divide," the book examines obstacles against black progress in America. We'll be joined by Bill Davis, a professor at Rutgers and branch historian for the New Brunswick Area NAACP. You can find the book at the library, on Audible, or in your favorite bookstore. And if you haven't already, please give your official Highland Park Municipal ID. You can review the application and get additional information at www.hbborough.com. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like, on a very sad note, that we lost our dispatcher, Karen Connors. She was with the Borough of Highland Park for the past 18 years, and I would like to take a moment of silence for her dedication and her life that she spent with us. Thank you. In light of the pending weather, the bad weather that we're supposed to have tomorrow, many of you know that the governor has declared a state of emergency, and so tomorrow, if you can stay inside, please, we strongly recommend for your safety that everyone stays home who can do so. We will be opening up warming centers should -- in the event that we would need them. So we will have a warming center at our youth and senior center on Sixth Avenue to 26th Avenue. If you should need -- require a warming center, please call our police department at (732) 572-3800, should you need a place to go in case of any kind of an emergency. The warming center will be open from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So you can call a police department registered that you will be needing the warming center from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. However, there will -- no kid will be accepted in the warming centers. Families should try to find someplace else to go because it's a volunteer service, it's a warming center. We don't have staff to man the center. It will be manned by volunteers. So it's strongly recommended that we do not have young children in the warming center for obvious reasons, for their protection, because there's no staff in there to manage childcare or anything else like that. On that note, we have another place that we're recommending, and that is Reform Church of Highland Park. They have volunteered their -- the youths, the church center, and they will be open for 24 hours. Should you need to use that facility, anyone, families or otherwise, their phone number is (732) 249-7349. So the Reform Church of Highland Park will be available to everyone who wishes to go to a warming center, and hopefully, no one will need that. They can stay home in the comfort of their own homes. But should you need that, the number is (732) 249-7349. You can reach out to the church office, and someone will be there to assist you because they are open 24 hours. And for our warming center, which will be open from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, call the police department at (732) 572-3800, and someone will assist you and provide information, and we will have volunteers that will be manning that center. After the snow falls, please remember that you need to remove the snow from your sidewalks, and it has to be done in a way that people who have wheelchair access and strollers and what have, you can still access the sidewalk. So please remember to remove the snow from the sidewalk for the safety of everyone. And our downtown businesses, we strongly encourage that you remove the snow from all areas of the sidewalk so people can have access to get into your business. With that, everyone, please stay safe, stay warm. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fine, do you have a report?
If you'd ask for it, I am, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you -- oh, I'm sorry, Council President, do you have a report? Hold on there.
I guess that the snow is on everyone's mind since it was overlooked, but I want to echo Councilwoman Foster-Dublin's recommendation. Please be careful. Please stay off the streets. Our DPW will be working the streets. They were out all day today, brining and getting ready. They're getting ready to come in as soon as the snow accumulates to the point where DOT says we have to start planning. The one good part, I have to tell you, Mayor, about the snow, is that we're going to be operating our RTV tonight.
Oh.
And into tomorrow. So if you see a real bug-eyed-looking machine driving on the sidewalks, that's going to be me and DPW. We actually have a plan to use it on some areas where we know that we have problems with our bigger trucks, and we think that this new, smaller piece is going to be able to really expand not only the usage of man hours, but our ability to service areas that we haven't been able to. I just want to make out a veteran's note. Veterans who have trouble transporting to the VA or other treatment facilities can call the Middlesex County Veteran Service Office, which is part of the Department of Human Services. The number is 7 through 2, 745-4051. On a historical note, I always try to give for the veterans, yesterday, the co-founder of Microsoft, Jeff Pace, and his ship, the SS Petrel, discovered the resting place of the USS Lexington, which was sunk during the Battle of the Coral Sea. It was sunk by us after it was severely damaged and unrepairable, and it is the first of the major capital carriers that was sunk during the war, but it was also instrumental in turning the course of the war in the South Coral Sea. It is a designated graveyard, as of last night, for the servicemen who went down with the ship. That's all, Mayor. I'll save the rest for next week.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Quickie. Just, if it wasn't clear from -- there are discussions about the weather, the borough offices will be closed tomorrow. So I just want to make sure that, I mean, we aren't going to defy our state order. However, I will -- I would like to mention, I've been buried in budgets, but there's one good note. This week, I have gotten the official word that our application to the Board of Public Utilities for our local government energy audit of all of our municipal buildings has been accepted. We had to provide a lot of documentation to get to this point. It will be kicking off probably in the next month. It's going to be a several-month process where we'll have inspectors coming to all our buildings and stuff, but this has been on my bucket list for a long time, so I'm very excited to report that and get brown points with sustainable lawn garden.
Nice job. Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
I have a report, Madam Mayor.
All right. I just have a couple of things in line with all the talk about the snow. If you go to our Facebook page, The Borough of Highland Park, you'll find we've been able to post a list of volunteers who will come and shovel your snow for you. Their names and phone numbers are listed, and it's provided by our senior center and rec center, so I hope you'll all be able to access that information. And speaking of the bribe, I get lots of questions when I'm walking around town, what is the striping in the middle of the street? Is that a new safety feature? Are we going to be repaving roads? No, folks, that is the bribe, and it's been working wonderfully. This is, I guess, towards the middle of 2017, was when we first got the machinery for this, and it does a fantastic job in melting, sort of, the snow, so it's easier to remove. So I want to thank DPW for coming up with that, that's been a great innovation for us.
I'll pass it along, Mayor. Thank you.
Tonight, on our consent agenda, there are two items I just want to mention that the council will be voting on. The first is the Democracy Act, and I know there are some people here who'd like to speak about that, and you'll be able to do that during the open public meeting portion of the agenda. And the other is, I'm proud to say that our own Senator Dagen has introduced new legislation down at the Senate to give the energy tax rebates back directly to the municipalities. What had happened, you've heard me say this 100 times already, what had happened was the state confiscated -- I shouldn't say that. The state -- the money that used to go to the municipalities was kidnapped.
Confiscated.
Borough Attorney, is there a better word for it?
It was not admitted. It was municipality.
Was wheelied. It was wheelied and kept down in Trenton and never made its way back to the municipalities for several years now. Just so you can understand the magnitude of that, the Borough of Highland Park alone is owed over $5 million in back energy tax rebate. So I'm hoping that there'll be a lot of support for this legislation, and if you'd like, please feel free to call any of our legislators to show your support for this. Our support will be voted on tonight on the consent agenda. And having said that, if there are anyone who would like to make some public comments, please come up to the microphone and just state your name and address.
My name is Herb Gross. I live at Adelaide Gardens. Tonight, I would like to just talk about what was on television this past couple of weeks, about the tragedy down in Florida and the tragedy all over the United States concerning these -- concerning the high school shootings. It was brought out by the senators and the congressmen on both sides of the aisle, and caught my ear. I saw it, and probably everybody in this room saw it. President Trump mentioned that he would like to see in the schools maybe retired police officers and women that have served, that are retired veterans, the men and the women that have served this country, to stand guard, to be hired and stand guard at the high schools to protect these students, right here in Highland Park I'm talking about, and the grammar schools, these young, beautiful children who one day will be our great leaders. I would like to see Highland Park think about hiring these law enforcement officers and men and women that are retired. I would like to give something back to the community in protecting our children. Everybody in this room saw and listened on TV. They're passing laws about the assault weapons. Believe me, I know what I'm saying. These lawmakers are talking out of both sides of their mouth because they know what they're talking about, but they're not telling the truth to people, meaning everybody in this room, everybody watching me what I'm saying on TV. These assault weapons, they're trying to pass a law to ban them. Ladies and gentlemen, you could take a 12-inch, a 12-gauge shotgun, a 22-long rifle, in a matter of minutes, you could make an assault weapon out of these rifles. These lawmakers are missing the boat. What is needed in this country is to ban all this information that they're giving these maniacs out there. They have to ban everything on this internet. This internet is ruling this country. In closing, I would like to thank all the members of the council and the mayor. I was presented with a pin, which I have right here this evening, from Highland Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I live on Graham Street, Highland Park, and I'm here to invite everybody who is concerned about the growing epidemic of gun violence that has been permeating our country. And if you want to report helping solve this problem, we're going -- the Brady Campaign is going to be having a meeting this Sunday at He Knows at 4:00. So please come, bring your energy, and bring your ideas, and it won't be a long meeting. It'll be a short meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please, one of you, come up. Just state your name and address, please.
Ruth Matilski, South Worth Avenue. So I just wanted to say a couple of things about the Democracy Act. I spent time on the phone the last week. The Democracy Act was sent to committee and the Senate and the Assembly, and Senator James Beach, he is the chairman of the New Jersey State Government Wagering Tourism and Tour Recreation Committee. He has decided to break the bill up into its parts and to pass each part individually. So when you're saying that you want the Democracy Act to pass, if you make that resolution, I think it's really important to say that you want the entire thing to pass, whether it's together or separately. I was told that the extended mail-in voting part of it has already passed the Senate and is on its way to the Assembly. On March 26th, the committee under Chairman Beach is going to take up automatic voter registration at the DMV, and hopefully, they will act speedily enough so that this passes in time for the primary. It's more likely that it will pass in time for November, but I think it's really important to understand the process that is being followed. So they also told me that they're not so sure about the extended in-person voting, that would mean leaving polling places open for two weeks before the election, something like that. There are some counties that do that, and the whole idea of the Democracy Bill was to include that, and they're not so sure they want to include that. So I don't know how the resolution is going to be worded, but I just wanted to pass it along.
Well, given this information, then I think what I'd like to do is get a motion to postpone the voting on 3/18/77 to the next meeting so that we can revisit the wording of our resolution and include more wording, modify it to, at your recommendation, to endorse it in whole or in part.
So I wrote something up? I want to see that.
That would be great. We're going to have to put it off till next week, the next meeting, though, but yes, if you can leave that with us, we'll be helpful in modifying.
I think I might come up.
One is now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Just give it to the clerk, please.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public discussion?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Is there a specific item that they're -- or items that they're trying to exclude? Do you have that in?
So, let me see. What I said was that they're not sure that they're going to -- they're not going to take up the extended in-person voting. And, you know, I don't know what's beyond the -- in -- beyond extending the mail-in voting and the automatic voter registration at the DMV, I don't know what they're doing beyond that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take a look and take a little extra time to modify. Please state your name and address.
Josh Umson, South Fourth Avenue. So I had some remarks written down, but I just want to kind of react to what was just discussed. I feel like delaying a vote is actually counterproductive because what's going on is that some legislators are concerned about certain costs associated with, say, the early voting, and there are costs. People have to staff offices. There are probably political concerns about expanding the number of people who vote. Some legislators are concerned that maybe opposition will grow in some districts, but I feel like what we need to do is show strong support for all the components of the Democracy Act, and especially the ones that are now somewhat in question, like early voting, which can have a really substantial positive impact on voter participation, especially among groups who, you know, find it difficult to vote because they're low-income, or they have working commitments, or they're young and they're not used to voting. And the same thing with, you know, the piece that's about to be voted on, which is automatic voter registration. A key issue is we want to get this thing passed, and ideally, all of its components, in time for the 2018 midterm, which is a crucial election determining the future of this country. So I think delaying will only, you know, allow kind of more discussion of, you know, different concerns about different components, but it seems to me that the value of these components is already pretty self-evident, and, you know, if the council already has concerns about pieces of it, they could just include that in the resolution. So I don't know. I feel like at a time when our country is facing so many threats to our democratic institutions, including the media, internal legal system, morals and ethics in government, we really have to take a stand and a timely stand that can affect what happens in Trenton on this important bill.
So I don't need to cut you off, Josh. So what I will do is I will ask for a motion, and then as each councilperson responds, they can say whether or not they want to vote on it as it is or wait till we amend it, and then we'll make a decision. Okay, is there any other public comment? Just in time.
Came from -- Good evening, everyone. I'm Melanie McDermott. I live at 330 South Third Avenue, and I want to take this opportunity to speak to you about the threat that's facing our public safety and our local environment in the form of this Emerald Ash pour. I have had the opportunity to, with the invitation of Councilwoman George, to present to the Shaintry Commission on this topic, and we had a little bit of exchange, and I'm encouraged by that exchange, and I'm looking forward to an opportunity to speak to you at more length on the issue. But the reason why I came today for public comment is I'm concerned about the sequence and the timing around this issue. My understanding is that you're in the middle of the budget process. So by the time, you know, your attention is able to turn to this pressing issue, the funds for addressing the issue, at least in the space that this year will have been allocated. So just in -- So just in brief, in 2015, an inventory of ash trees was done in Highland Park identifying 407 ash trees. Plus or minus, it was a rabid inventory on public land. At that time, it was known that the Emerald Ash Bore was in Millsack County. This is, every single ash tree in our entire borough will die. It's 100% fatal. By the time the outward symptoms of the sickness of the tree become evident, it is already too brittle to be removed by normal methods. So we have 73 street trees for which clearly the borough is responsible. Many of the others fall to the county. It does not give me any pleasure to say that Councilwoman George had been falling to the county. The county has been doing nothing, as far as we can tell. They're trying to come up with a plan, three years into a process that was identified in Illinois years before the year 2000. That the progress of this is completely evident. It's been devastating street trees across our country. So if we do not remove these trees, they are a public safety hazard. If we remove them before they are infested or in the first year of their infestation, it will cost, I don't know what it costs the borough, but it costs a homeowner, like, let's say, in the order of $2,000 to have a fully mature tree removed. If the tree is already infested, it will cost two to three times that much. And certain reputable firms will not even touch the tree. So if we don't act now and start on a phased process of removal of our street trees, the cost will still come back and it will still be on the borough. So I am imploring the council to set aside some funds to start addressing the problem this year. Fortunately, we have hired a forester because, as it happens, the Community Forestry Plan, which we registered with the state, it's a very important program. By being part of the Community Forestry Program, we get liability coverage, and Highland Park has been a responsible participant in this program. Our plan is up for renewal, a five-year renewal. So my understanding is funds have been allocated. Kevin Scavilia, who's a reputable forester with whom I've had a few phone conversations, has already been hired. This is the year he needs to make, work with the STACK, Shade Tree Commission, and the borough ultimately, to register, to pass a plan which will be hopefully approved by the state Urban and Community Forestry Council, upon which I now sit. So I'm appointed by the state forester to this body, so I've kind of got a little bit of a window seat on some of these processes. I have been urging the Shade Tree Commission to take advantage of the contract with their forester and have the forester front-load the effort on ash trees. Come up with a strategy for how we're going to address this problem because there are various workarounds. You can top the tree in year one, and then it won't be a host for more Emerald Ash Bores. You know, you can take it down, people won't like it, right? It won't be a, but, but it will, the trees, you know, D-lim trees, when people are taking down trees that look perfectly healthy, will upset residents. But it's actually good that residents get upset because the second part of our responsibility as a borough is to inform homeowners that they have a liability on their hands because nobody is going to help them. So they are ultimately going to have to remove the ash trees on their own property at either a reasonable price or double or triple that price. Finally, if we wanted to get really proactive, we could band together with other municipalities and maybe get our county moving and do bulk contracts. That would save everybody a lot of money. But the immediate opportunity that this council has is to instruct or encourage, or whatever the right word is, the Shade Tree Commission to report back the next meeting with an initial strategy that they work with their forester to produce and to decide what trees are slated for removal this year. I should add that it's also possible to chemically treat trees, but that means that they, it's a lifetime commitment. It's every other year, usually a couple hundred dollars a tree. So that is an option for, to preserve a specimen ash, if we would like to do that. So those are my sort of quick remarks. I am more than happy to continue to work with council of the Shade Tree Commission. But as you're going through this budget process, I really urge you to set aside some funds for getting started this year. Thanks.
Just briefly, thank you, Dr. McDermott. I did send out a note to the County Parks Department, which seems to be coordinating right now about meeting with some of the other towns where there's a large county presence in the parks. I'm thinking primarily Roosevelt, where I worked as a kid, to try and see whether some of those plans are feasible. We have a modest increase in tree maintenance, which probably will not cover it. The estimates for resolving this problem are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the borough cannot afford that. It will unsums. So we are trying to come up with plans. I did meet with DPW, with my regular weekly meeting last week, and we did discuss it at that time. And trying to get the county now, to get the towns which have the both street trees of their own and county institution in town to see if we can coordinate the effort somehow. That's in its beginning stages, and unfortunately, we're not going to be in a position to put it on the budget next week. But we are trying to come up with a plan that we can do some other work this year and phase it in over the next two or three.
So that's very encouraging. I'm very glad to hear that. So just another sort of factual note is that, and this year's spring seems to be advanced, but sometime in April, so let's just do a little climate change calculation and say it's March, like more or less now, the bugs emerge. So if we have the bug in Highland Park, and it's highly likely to do it, I don't know when this has been caught to yet, it's been identified in the scada way, we can't do operations while about and about that which is proliferating. So the next window of opportunity is the fall. So if I understand you correctly, and I, but the budget processes are a bit of a mystery to me, there would be an opportunity if, over the course of the next few months or the summer, a phased plan is developed that requires the borough to act this year when the budget has already been set. There is that kind of flexibility to then allocate funds, additional funds to tree removal in the fall, the fall-winter?
I don't.
I can't say that. It depends on the costs, and that's going to depend on, really, on coordination with the county and other municipalities. Because going it alone, even for us to remove our 73 street trees, it's not a doable thing. The cost is just astronomical to remove them, considering that they're healthy, since it's not been detected in Highland Park, but we know it's coming. But that's, the part of the problem is, the council passed away all of the wants and needs and all of the existing costs and expenses. And I know what the estimates are. I know that the estimates to solve all of our Highland Park problems, including Donaldson Park, which is a county responsibility, is estimated at over a half a million dollars.
Yeah, that's including all the county trees. But the 73, we have roughly, according to records, depending on the state of infestation, four years to deal with it. So it's over four years, 73 trees.
I just wanted to say, we're working on a plan that the borough can both afford and that gets the problem done over the next several years.
Okay, hopefully it'll end this year, and that's my.
Thank you for staying strong on this. We'll figure something out.
Okay, all right. And as I said, I'm more than happy to come back and give a little wider report.
Okay. So it is, we're running out of time here. So first, I want a, can I have a motion to pull 3/18/77 from the consent agenda for further discussion tonight?
Also moved.
Consent agenda, second person?
I'll second.
It's a roll call.
This is just for the warriors.
Wait, I'm not. Okay, roll call, please. Councilman Thine?
Just so I'm clear, this is a question of whether or not we're going to pull that going on.
This is to pull it so we can discuss it and vote on it separately?
So we're separate?
No. The, yes, the Democracy Act, yeah.
Oh, we're not setting on a separately today?
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch? Councilwoman Welkowitz?
I'm delighted to discuss it.
Thank you. So now let's take a vote on the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Move.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you skipped a whole lot of stuff.
Move those.
Okay, Clerk, would you report on advertising the ordinance for dissolution of Highland Park Redevelopment Agency? For consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Norrington Borough of Highland Park, County Millsack, State of New Jersey, dissolving the Borough of Highland Park Redevelopment Agency pursuant to NJSA 4812-824 and NJSA 48 by the 8-20. It was duly advertised for consideration, passage. Final read by title, affidavit publication on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title, salute.
Second.
Any public hearing on this? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? Motion to adopt?
I'll second.
Councilman Thine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve the emergency temporary appropriations?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call, please. Councilman Thine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve the budget transfers?
Salute. Second.
Roll call, please. Councilman Thine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
All right, now moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the following items? 12, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please. Councilman Thine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Just a quick comment about the Dagnum Bill, about the energy taxes. I just wanted to point out that statewide, municipalities statewide are owed $740 million in energy tax receipts. And I encourage everybody to read this bill and see how this legislation is capitalized. I have to say that, you know, just being a New Jerseyan, I won't hold my breath just to see this money quickly flow back, flow back to the municipalities, even though we desperately need it, and I hope it does. But I just wanted to point out that what it does do is that it also changes the way that the tax credits are distributed. Before, they just went directly to the state, and now these payments will go directly back to the towns, which is really important. So even if we're waiting for the money to come back to us from previous receipts, now there's a fundamental change on money flowing back into our towns. Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and discuss item number 13, the resolution to support the Democracy Act? Motion to discuss.
So moved, or second, sorry.
So we heard tonight testimony in two different directions. One indicating that there might be some changes to this resolution and which we could wait and modify it to say that we want to introduce it in whole or in part. That's one option. And the other option is to just go ahead because of the urgency of this legislation and pass it in whole. So I would like to hear from each of the council people, and then we can put it up for a vote in either direction, depending on what I'm hearing. So I'm going to start down on my left with Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Because of the importance of this act, I would strongly recommend that we go ahead as it's proposed, and we can make amendment to it later. So I would go ahead with as it is now tonight, and then we can make additional amendment as the time comes around to do so.
Okay, Councilman Thine?
I agree with Councilmember Foster Dublin. I think time is of the essence and that we should vote on the resolution as is to support the Democracy Act.
Okay, Councilwoman Welkowitz?
What it seems to me is that they're trying to dilute it by splitting it up. And I think these are important issues. I'd like to vote on it tonight.
Okay. Councilman Hirsch?
I concur. I voted not to pull it from the consent agenda just because I think we need to get this through. It's a resolution. We need to make a statement, and I think, you know, we can get stuck in the weeds figuring out what the legislature's going to support these individuals.
And Councilperson George?
Mayor de Blasio was one of the starters of the democracy movement by appointing the first democracy director for the city of New York City. We need to join the states and municipalities that are now enacting that Democracy Act. While I admit that I have significant reservations since I represent a number of superintendent elections as to how we think we can finance keeping offices manned in municipalities, I think that we have to expedite it. I think we need to send a message. I think we need to send a strong message to certain people who seem to be admiring dictatorships, especially if you're history, study the history of Western Europe from 1933 on. And I think we need to pass this immediately.
All right, then may I have a motion to vote on the resolution as it currently stands? Salute.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Councilman Thine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, this is our last public discussion session. Anybody have something they want to say? Chief, you're not raising your hand, are you? All right.
Just be safe.
Okay, everyone, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference?